Good evening. We're at item 1.1, call to order of open session. Open session of November 16, 2022, the Governing Board and Trustees Meeting is called to order at 4:31 PM. 1.2 is public input concerning items on the closed session agenda. The incumbents members of the public have requested to address the Governing Board regarding items that are on the closed session agenda. If there's any input, you can give it to a slip to the molly. Otherwise, I will call up Iren Yon, called by Kelly Higgin. Persons wishing to address the Board on any closed session item, except personal items, are invited to do so at this time. In the interest of time and order, presentations from the public are limited to three minutes per person per topic. If you wish to speak, complete a blue speaker slip. Locate the doctor of the room and present to the Secretary of the Board prior to starting the meeting. When I invite you to the podium, please say your name before making your presentation. Iren Yon, followed by Kelly Higgin.
Can I be old to her?
No, it's an order that I called. Would you like to take his three minutes?
Would I like to take a moment?
Your three minutes, would you like to give your public comment?
I would, but I'd like to follow Kelly.
Okay, no, we, I just called an order, so this is the order that I'm calling in.
But who set the order? I didn't.
We're gonna go ahead and start, so if you'd like to speak, if you could just come up to the.
Okay, I can't hear you, but I'll go ahead and talk. Nobody said I could talk. Okay, good to see everybody again. It's been a long time since I've been here. And I'm not up with all the meetings that you're having. I think COVID changed a lot of that, and it's hard for me to keep up. My biggest problem that I have is that we have no place for our children in this community to have an open, free place to throw a ball, run, play with a dog, or whatever. And I think we have more than enough classrooms if we expand either Delmar Hills or keep this one down. Then Roman has gone down. I personally know a lot of my neighbors have decided they don't want to put their children in public school because of all the regulations and changes that have come across. I don't know, even though I was a teacher for 20 years. I taught mostly high school and junior high. I also was on the community planning group for six, seven years. And during that whole time, and I think you've heard this before, during that whole time, we were trying to get a place that would be a place for children to go. There is nowhere for children to go. You've even included hallways interior instead of exterior. In addition to being a teacher, I also am a parent of three children and six grandchildren. Of which, not all the grandchildren are academic, one of them was not. Absolutely hated school, it was a big deal. By the way, he turned out to be one of the more successful people I know. But he hated school at the time. And what saved him, and saved a lot of children, whether they be a boy or girl, is the fact that you include physical exercise as well as academic. And I think that by making most of the school buildings, you are missing out on that. I think it's horrendous that all this, this problem right now, you have no playground for children to go play in. They closed it down because of COVID. They closed it down because they were building a school. I think it's horrible, horrible. I'm sorry, but I really think I'm right. I'm 86 years old, and I've lived a long life, and I've had grandchildren. Unfortunately, no great grandchildren. And I feel that this is as important for you to consider as it is to have a bunch of academic inside learning. So if you have any questions of me, I'll be glad. I have the life experience, I have a teaching experience, I have a grandmother and a parent experience. And I'm really, I'm sure that I'm correct in what I'm telling you.
Thank you, your time is expired.
Thank you. I learned earlier today that there were meeting, that there's four meetings today. And I have strongly felt for way too long that there needed to be a door open for discussions to take place, for open discussions between two groups that greatly care about each of their interests. I am a collaborator, I'm a long-term thinker. I do not think that the way to solve things is through attorney general system. I would like to see these two groups come together. I do not have a specific voice or a vote on the community side, but I have a collaborative voice of influence to say, could there be a better way to get things done that work for all? How do we do this in a better way? I don't like to see what is happening, but based on things that are being said in the community, it is very difficult for me to speak up, but I'm here tonight because I care. I care about our school, and I care about our community. And it's time to move this school forward and get it done in a way that works for all. There's a great quote that a neighbor sent to me, a neighbor that lives on Mango that has, I think, nine kids and a lot more grandkids. She follows a PhD Marshall Rosenberg who has a great quote, regardless of our many differences, we all have the same needs. What differs is the strategy for fulfilling those needs. Could there be a better way to get this done? I'm just going to ask that question. I would like to see a door open for all to discuss some way to get this done. Everyone has a core list of needs, and I believe that both sides have the same needs. It's like a Venn diagram. Let's find the middle that works for everyone and get it done. And work this back and forth, it just needs to get done. I leave myself open for anyone to contact. I would like to see both sides come together and find a way to get this done. As we are preparing to exit the booth, I found a book as I was clearing things out. What to do with a problem.
Thank you, your time is expired.
Essentially, a problem and opportunity.
Thank you, your time is expired.
Thank you. I'm going to leave you guys with this. And I just ask that something positive be formed. Thank you. Sorry.
Item 1.3 is German closed session. The Board will make closed session to confirm following matters. 2.1, Congress Legal Counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.2, Congress Legal Counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.3, Congress Legal Counsel anticipating a litigation, Government Code 54956.9. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, Evaluation of Employees as identified on the agenda, 54957 D1. 2.8, 2.9, 2.10, 2.11, Congress Labor Negotiator as identified on the agenda, 54957.6. The Board will now adjourn into closed session at 4:40 PM. Okay, good evening again, for those of you who were here with us earlier. Mirror item 3.1, call for order of open session. Thank you for your patience. We are rekeeping the open session at 6:21 PM. By law and law policy, I'm going to notify you that this meeting is being recorded. By law and law policy, any member of the public may address the Board on an item on the agenda or any non-agenda item, but the public must present a written request to the Board. Therefore, I ask you to kindly submit your speakers' slips at this time. Help us run an efficient meeting. Speakers' slips for non-agenda items may be turned in prior to 4.2. Hearing the public regarding non-agenda items, you will be called, recognized and called to the podium at that time. You have three minutes to address the Governing Board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker's slip will need to be turned in by 5.6. Hearing the public regarding agenda items. If you recognize and call to the podium when your requested agenda item comes up, then you'll have three minutes to address the Governing Board. 3.2, report of actions taken in closed session. The Governing Board been in closed session and reporting on the following actions taken regarding items 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, and 2.7. The Governing Board has determined that the goal progress as required by employment agreements for the superintendent and assistant superintendents have been met. As specified in the employment agreements, the Board approved goals related to forms compensation regarding evaluation of Superintendent Allen Clark and Assistant Superintendent Chris Alhamdi, Estelle Peterson, and Ryan Stanley. 3.3 is the Pledge of Allegiance. We now welcome Helen Clark for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.4, approval of the agenda. One revision of the agenda per staff, remove consent, agenda item 6.12, which will be agendaized at a future board meeting. Okay, so are there any other changes to the agenda?
I think I'd like to move 8.4 through 8.7 on the agenda.
Okay. So we have motion to approve the, we made a motion to approve the agenda consent, agenda item 6.12 removed, as well as as 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, and 8.7. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with these changes?
Some.
Is there a second? Is there a second to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, call on favor. Scott, I pose. Okay, the motion to approve the agenda has passed. 4.1 is for Spanish regarding district business.
Good evening, the Superintendent's Office has received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics, community, tourism, teen class, and health and safety. Thank you.
4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now call members of the public who have requested to address the Governing Board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the Governing Board regarding the non-agenda items have been completed, send them to speakers at this time. I'm going to get several items. I'm going to call you two at a time, so the first person comes up, and the second person, you know that you're coming in next. I'm going to have Leslie Hodge, Paula Ann Philip.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Hodge. My backyard is overlooking Torrey Hills School North Playground. And our daughter went to school there from 2002 to 2007. At that time, we had excellent relationships with Gary Wilson, Torrey Hills' first principal, and Tom Bishop, the then superintendent. Starting in July of this year, we've been subject to five water balloon attacks at our house and three more to our neighbors on either side. I don't use the word attack lightly. The water balloon strikes are coming with force and great velocity. They sound like gunshots. Some kind of catapult or gun must be being used. We've had some damage, and we're worried for our safety and for our dogs. The last attack was on October 15th. Over the past four months, I've had numerous email exchanges, phone calls, and in-person meetings with the police, Rachel Sanfey's security, persons with the district, San Diego Parks and Rec, who informed me that Torrey Hills is not under a joint use agreement with the city. This includes 16 emails, calls, and meetings with district employees. On October 18th, I met with an employee of the district. We agreed it was unlikely that the police would be able to catch these attackers, and we agreed that some kind of deterrence would be needed. One of the three actions we wanted to pursue was to add video security surveillance in the area where the balloons appear to be launched based on balloon fragments collected after the attacks and our observations. I'm happy to hear the district is moving forward with video cameras, but I'd like to know exactly where the cameras will be located. I've not yet received an update regarding the other two requests. First, we're asking that the parking lot lights be turned on on weekends and non-school days in addition to school days. Second, we're asking that the seven pedestrian gates to the campus be closed and locked at dark every night. My request to the Board is to put these three items, video surveillance, nightly gatelocking, and nightly parking lot lights turned on on the agenda for the December board meeting. I have over 20 pages of documentation and a bunch of balloon fragments regarding all these actions that I've taken to try to get resolution on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, and we can't respond directly right now, but I can refer this to staff to call up with you in regard to your requests. So next we'll have Ann Philip, followed by Elena Deek.
I would first like to take a moment to congratulate the incumbent board members on their reelection. I appreciate your candor and honesty in the Leo Women Voters Campaign's forum. When I set up the environment in my classroom, the intent goes far beyond what a student can see or interact with physically. Students learn to trust, they can be their true selves, they can struggle, ask for help, and be supported by me in their weakest moment and their strongest. We allow students to reflect and take control of their learning to affect their future as they live their present. We teach them that their voices matter. I then would pose two questions. Do we believe the teachers who deliver the education to our children are treated with the same care and openness that they give to students? And what kind of district are we going to be? Teachers are expected to improve, evolve, and adjust what they teach to best serve their students. I am evaluated for my effectiveness, and if my work is ineffective, I am proven. This is fair, this is part of the job. There are a lot of wonderful things about DMUSD that I'm proud of, but here are some areas of need. We have an environment where many teachers are afraid to share their true concerns, including in small groups where we're meant to speak freely. When our cyber have taken universal concern to PR, some major issues never make it out of the room, and it makes us feel sometimes that the script is pre-written. We teach equity, that every child should have their unique needs met with various tools. Teachers should not be reprimanded for embellishing district curriculum with their own materials and expertise, but some have been. So teachers are not above evaluation, critical study, or improvement. We expect it. We expect tight performance of our leadership as well. Our DD22 document references the relentless pursuit of the extraordinary school experience. Relentless pursuit without enough time to address problems is not healthy for kids or adults. How about the thoughtful pursuit? Well, the union has been asking for many years to please reduce training days in the first six weeks of school so we can spend maximum time setting our classroom and school norms. The district reaction has not been tolerable, but the effect on students is. When for months stakeholders have been asking for independent climate surveys, it's always happened. What does that mean? To me, it means, I don't want your voice heard. Well, my voice is here, and my voice is heard. I end every class at school with positive comments, so I'm going to do that here. To district leadership, we need you. We want to understand and to compromise to work together. We appreciate the technology, the innovation, the furniture, and the exploration. Please do not ignore us, the humans with our hands on the wheel of the daily student experience. Please do not punish people for questioning the narrative. We can be great together. To the Board, we appreciate you. You are meant to be a check and balance to strengthen the system with accountability. Please continue to do so and act independently. Tomorrow, I will teach with joy, care, and open mind towards the needs of those in front of me. This is how I know to lead. I ask all members of DMUSD to stand up for yourself and for each other. I love this district, let's be proud to come to work.
Elena Deek, followed by Lori C.
Hello, first I'd like to extend a congratulations to the incumbents who were reelected for the Board this year. I am hoping that this year will be a year of growth and change in the positive direction for our district as a whole. There are so many positive things about our district. I feel I can speak for many teaching positions when I say that we are truly here to give every child a positive, rewarding, and high-quality educational experience. As you have all heard from parents and teachers last year, educators have been requesting a survey for the wellness of teachers since 2019. It is my personal hope that this can be, this can happen sooner rather than later and before the district design and vision is put into place. As the district, as the district gave all of our students wellness surveys, I believe it is important to survey the wellness and gather input from teachers who are in the classroom daily, interacting with our students, and responsible for educating them. We teach in this district because we love our students and families, and we are hopeful that our opinions and input are not only valued, but used to guide the change and direction that will continue to make this the best district. I ask that you please add an agenda item to the next board meeting to discuss how to conduct an independent third-party survey. I also want to express my gratitude to the effort that has been put into bridging the gap between educators and special education service providers, specifically in special education. Speaking for myself and a few close colleagues, I can say that there has been a significant effort from the administration to mend relationships and be open to input from special education teachers. May I thank you?
Good evening, and I echo the congratulations to the incumbents. As you know from my September presentation, I teach the upper-grade alternative curriculum class at Delmar. And this past October, when we were all asked to give our students a wellness survey, I was able to present to a few of my students who were able to access the survey. And it meant that I was able to read every question in the survey to them and help them make their choices and join this process. I could not help but think that, you know, there were a lot of incumbents and staff last year who have stood at this same podium and requested a wellness survey, and now we've heard it continues. So now you've been reelected, and you've renamed, thank you. So please listen to those of us who have attended our board meetings and those of us who speak for the other teachers who are afraid to speak for themselves. We would like a wellness survey for the third party. My positive, I love this district, I love my students, I love the families, and I have a huge shout-out for my very resilient Heights family members. So, thank you.
We are at item 5.1, Board Recognition, DMUSD Employees of the Month for November and December.
Please join me congratulating these DMUSD employees of the month for the months of November and December. From Ashley Falls, Adrianne Beaman, third grade teacher, Kamal Delmar, Fran Carkinson, second grade teacher, Delmar Heights, Teresa Solis, second grade teacher, Delmar Hills, Taylor Singer, fifth grade teacher, Oceanair, Joy Marcella, site substitute teacher, Pacific Sky, Lori Greenstat, school counselor, Sage Canyon, Wendy Korea, kindergarten teacher, Sycamore Ridge, Heather Kowieski, fifth grade teacher, Torrey Hills, Kendall Tavares, early childhood inclusion education specialist, Early Childhood Development Center, Julie Woods, lead teacher, and from the district office, Katie Tran, senior programmer analyst. These are wonderful employees who do great things for children every day. Please join me in congratulating them on being our employees of the month.
Congratulations and thank you. 5.2 is a board report from the Delmar Schools Education Foundation, DMUSD president, Logan.
Last thing I just want to say is that, you know, we've had a lot of new directors come, people interested in volunteering and supporting the foundation, so that's great. But there's always room for more, especially as we get to Jogathon, we need parent volunteers. So, and some of our schools are low, some of our schools have more, but like Sycamore Ridge, we could use more. So, you know, as you, as anyone who's out there, people are interested in C+, we're always open to people who want to support by either becoming a director, becoming an ambassador, or just a volunteer during Jogathon. It's all, we're, we're really amazed that the people who have joined and become directors, it's really incredible, but there's still room for more, so.
Delmar Hills, PTA president, Wimmy Kirk. Wimmy Kirk, Josh McClure, President of Halmspur, members of the Board and the community. I'm Wimmy Kirk, I'm the president of the PTA over at Delmar Hills. And when I talk to families, especially new families, about PTA and what we do, every time I go into the biggest flashy events, you know, we have an ice cream social, your kids are going to love you, your carnival, our staff appreciation, we get all this stuff. Something that I always overlook, and I think it's really important, is that every one of our PTAs, district-wide, is a really wonderful conduit for helping our families contribute and support the community. All year long, all across the district, PTA organizing drives and collections and programs that we do is so simple for our kids and our families to contribute to the community. So I reached out to the other PTA presidents to ask some examples, things that they do in the community, either have a plan for this year and have done already. And their response was just so heartening and encouraging. I'm going to share three examples with you.
We are at item 1.4, Board Report for the Governing Board members. I am going to kick it off by congratulating Catherine, Doug, and Scott for winning reelection to our Board. And I'm so appreciative that the voters realized the great job you all are doing and chose to keep our leadership team together. It's a privilege to work with each one of you on this Board. And also, it's just great to get the, you know, community's support for the work that this group's been doing over the past few years. So I think this was a nice to have that affirmed.
Thank you. I will just go and get my one item in the board report, two things, and then I'll just pass it back down this way. I attended the, we are now calling what's called the School Board Book Club, and now it's going to be called the School Board Collaborative, which is basically all the school boards, all the school boards that are feeders into San Tiquito have, we meet three times a year, and we usually read a book, or some of us read the book, and, and we share what's going on in our districts and, and try to collaborate basically across school boards. We always have, you know, one or two members attending that. So it was really great, and this time you're honored to have the group hosted at Pacific Sky. So huge thank you to Dr. McClure, Angela Peterson, for coming out to explain to all of our area districts and to San Tiquito what we have been able to accomplish with the way that the furniture is being used throughout. The building, of course, speaks for itself, it's a beautiful building to show off, but also how the building exemplifies the vast in learning practices by how the teacher uses the space and how the furniture is being used to support learning. And there was a lot of interest in what we've accomplished there and excitement that we've been able to roll out almost district-wide the same kinds of far shinks and improvements. So that was exciting. I just want to say one thing, since it's not on the agenda separately as it was last month, but with regard to the climate survey, that is part of our strategic planning process. So if that was missed, I'm sorry, but we'll definitely clarify that as we go forward in explaining how the strategic process is going to be rolling out over the course of the spring. With that, it will go down to Catherine.
Thank you very much, good evening everyone. I just wanted to.
I just wanted to express my gratitude that I'm serving another term on this Board and helping students and families and getting to represent my community that I love so much. And that's all my report. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you for supporting me for another four years on the Board. I apologize to Will for, you know, I was thinking, this is great, technology is wonderful, because I had to take my wife to the airport, so I was gonna have to leave the meeting a little early. I said, oh, I can stay longer if I just use their Microsoft Teams. But we had glitches, and I was never able to get connected. So good intentions, but I will make it to another one, I assure you. But you guys are doing a great job, and we really appreciate all the hard work you guys do on the foundation. I was also at the two different site visits over at Delmar Hills and over at Sycamore Ridge over the, since last board meeting. It's great to see the students in the class. Things are back to normal. Got to see some of the things that we're talking about for the modernization over the Delmar Hills area. And so I'm really looking forward to us being able to get that project started and completed. I would see several of these projects completed and get students back in the spots where they belong. And then Sycamore Ridge, same thing, seeing the classrooms, how they utilize the space, both in the Hills and Sycamore Ridge, with flexible learning areas and kind of what we're trying to do. But seeing the kids, seeing them learn, and excited to be in the classrooms is really, is really a fun. That's really a fun thing. And so that's my report.
And I too am thankful, because it's that time of year, for everybody's vote and encouragement for me to remain on the Board. I appreciate that very much. I'm thankful to be part of this leadership Board. And as Scott mentioned, there was a site visit to Sycamore Ridge, which I've always believed, and have missed it so much since the pandemic, for us to get out there and be with the teachers and the kids and see what's going on in classrooms, I think is so important for us, but I think it's important for the teachers to see that we care enough to go out there. I know, and we're coming up on CSBA, and there's so many other districts where the board members don't go and visit the sites. But for me, it's certainly a highlight to get down and ask the kids what they're doing and hear them explain the work that they're doing, which when I was at their grade level, was far beyond what I was doing with blocks and crayons, because they're well above where I was. I'm also looking forward to a board meeting for the North City West Facilities Financing Board. But this is the end-of-the-year meeting, which is always good because we end up taking back a nice check for some of the cost overruns for some of the construction that went on many, many years ago. So I'm hoping that we see something from that at the end of this month. And I'm also looking forward to the School Board Association's annual conference coming up at the end of, or the beginning of next month. And it's always good to meet with other school districts and board members on those districts and share ideas and learn best practices. So I will wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I can't believe we're here in November, but happy Thanksgiving nonetheless. And we'll see you next month.
Good evening, everyone. I went to multiple site visits this month, so I was at Delmar Hills. Thank you to Andrea and Holly for being there. Andrea's lead, they did a wonderful job. And Delmar Hills is, in the modernization, but it's looking, everything is looking on the good path there. Principal Lee's doing a wonderful job, and it's great to have her show me around. I went to another one at Delmar Heights at Ocean Air, so I was kind of curious to see how that worked. And so basically, I got to see a little bit of both, kind of where Heights were on both campuses. And I'd really like to see them get to the new school, but it was, it was, yeah. But they're doing the best they can with what they have, and the teachers are doing a wonderful job with what they have, and they're making it work. And I appreciate them doing that for the students, and they're doing a wonderful job there. And thank you to Jenny for showing me around as well. Also went to the School Board Collaborative with Erica and Russell. And it's always wonderful to be in those opportunities, kind of meet with other school members, be able to chat and have discussions about how our roles are, because we really don't get to talk with one another so often. So it's that nice to be able to share information with other school boards in different districts and kind of see how their situation is and kind of relay information, which is pleasant. And that was, I saw some kind of work, because it's after that. I was also at the PTA president's meeting, where Wendy was there as well. And I just want to say thank you to Wendy for all the work that you guys are doing. And it's like, PTA is really amazing, so it's really like the one conduit that we have in like elementary schools to the community. And obviously, as you were showing even to the greater community of San Diego. And so it's a wonderful, it's wonderful community building that you all do. And I really appreciate that. It's awesome. I love seeing community coming together and doing great things and coming together and being bigger than just your individual parts. So that's really cool. And I also want to say thank you to teachers for their comments, one, the public comments that you made. One thing that I wanted to know was that, that Elena, you mentioned that the worst steps that are taken that have kind of many of the relationships between special ed staff, and I'm hopeful that that's something that can also be done in a larger teacher's sense. And hopefully that's some of the things that Erica had kind of mentioned through the school serving process and the strategic planning process. Hopefully that's something that can be incorporated and for teachers to be a part of that, and also that relationship can kind of build further, that's something that's happened with the special ed. Hopefully that's in a larger, can be transferred to the larger teachers as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I congratulate you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Congrats, guys.
So, sorry.
Sorry.
From two on.
Yes.
Okay. So 5.5 is a board report with superintendent.
Good evening. It has been great to meet with so many people from throughout the district at focus group meetings, both with, and to see children, obviously, at school sites that you've mentioned. The focus group meetings have been with parents, at PTA, excuse me, as well as, I'm speller wrong, sorry. That'll be great.
Okay. Okay. Take a brief pause here, and I'll just read 5.6 is a hearing of public regarding agenda items. For anyone who would like to address the governing Board on a particular agenda item, your speaker is a willing to turn at this time. You'll be recognized and called to the podium when your requested agenda item comes up, and you'll have the privilege to address the governing Board.
I'm good, yes. I think as long as I can talk. And those focus group meetings have been great, and I would tell you, I'm really, really proud of the kinds of conversations we're having, the in-depth, open conversations with the schools that I've been at, how the teachers have been forthcoming, and how extremely happy I am with the incredibly positive relationships that I experience and feel throughout the district. So I, it's what I value most, first and foremost, is relationships with the people. And to counter, to actually comment on what you just commented on, Jiwah, I think relationships throughout the district are very strong. And I'm very proud of those kinds of interactions, engagement, relationships, and focus group, that meeting conversations and dialogue that we've been having. So I look forward to it. I look forward to the strategic planning process. I very much appreciate the collaboration and input from the PTA presidents. We had a great conversation at the last meeting about how to engage with our community around strategic planning. That was great. I also am looking forward to opportunities for in-person experiences with each of our sites, to be able to be there. One of the things the PTA presidents talked about was they appreciated when we're actually able to go out and have in-person interactions with the different schools. So that will be exciting coming up in the next several months. And again, thank you, Will, for all that you're doing with DMSCF. It's great. I too want to say I appreciate and grateful for the wonderful staff we have in this school district. I have an opportunity to work with them and see them every day and spend time with them, as well as our extraordinary leadership team. Our cabinet is, I can tell you, superb. I look into one of you. You're incredibly talented. I'm grateful for all that you do every day to serve this district, the teachers in this district, and first and foremost, obviously, our children and the entire community. I hope you know how grateful I am for you, for all of our principals, our entire leadership team, and as I said already, for our teachers and the rest of our support staff throughout our district. We have a lot of people who care a lot about, a lot about children, and I greatly value the relationships I have with every one of those people. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, and congratulations to incoming.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We are at 5.7, Board Report will minutes for the October 26, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
You, opposed or favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. A motion to approve this is passed. The consent agenda items, 6.1 through 6.21, are there any questions on the consent items? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent items, 6.1 through 6.21, with the exception of 6.12, which was removed? Is there a second?
I'll sign it.
On favor?
Aye.
Vote. Consent agenda has passed. 7.1 is Board Report, our CAS scores for Vivian Firestone for New Year of Assessment Data and Integrated Technology.
Great. Well, it is my pleasure to provide a number view of the Smarter Balance Assessment results from spring 2020. I see 2020. The Smarter Balance Assessment is a comprehensive assessment of assessment given to grades 3 through 6, and it was lasted with the spirit for 2019. Students are tested in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and in addition to that, our 5th grade students are tested in Science. Each content area assessment is comprised of two parts. One of the parts is a computer adaptive test, and the other is a performance task. Last year, a shortened version of the ELA and Math Test were administered to students. The computer adaptive portion of the test presented fewer questions to students. There were no changes to the performance task last year. The test is untimed, but for most participants, about an hour and a half less testing time altogether. And it's anticipated that we'll be moving forward that shortened version of this part. So our students continue to perform at high levels despite the challenges of the last few years. Our students continue to perform in the top lines of the center school districts in our state for both Math and English Language Arts. And our students have the highest percentage of students performing at the exceeds level in the county. This graph shows our entire test population as compared to state and county performance in each proficiency level for English Language Arts. This is the same information for Mathematics. This graph shows students' performance in 2019 as compared to 2022 in English Language Arts. And statistically, when we look at these results, we can say that we're really stable between that 2019 demonstration and now. That is true for Mathematics as well. And one of the things that we looked at was the piece where we needed to remember that as we were looking at all of our students that were tested, only our 6th grade students had previously taken the Smarter Balance. 3rd, 4th, 5th graders took it for the first time last year. So this graph shows the performance in English Language Arts for those 6th graders in 2019 and then in 2022. And while we have a few less students scoring at exceeds level, overall, we actually have more students meeting expectation, so that in the meets and exceeds combined group. This is the same graph, but now for Mathematics. Sorry. There's English Language Arts. Slide ahead, didn't realize it. And this is Mathematics. We had 660 students who took the test last year who were part of our MOX program during the 2020-2021 school year. And this graph shows the percentage of students who attended launch and scored at the meets and exceeds level. Our students did well with the support of hard-working teachers and parents. We were the only district to offer a choice for our students to attend in person or to enroll in a high-quality remote program. And for those students who made the choice to attend launch, we made it very clear that parents were going to need to be directly involved in the educational program for their children. We really think that this expectation had a positive impact on student learning. Those students did have that. We're now going to have a chance to see.
Just to clarify, I mean, just to clarify there. So for the, effectively, students who did not meet or exceed expectations in Math and ELA, for the launch students, that is what's like 8% or 9%, which is higher than for the overall population, if I understand that correctly. Looking at.
When I look at the meets and exceeds for students that attended, for students that attended launch, yes, there was a higher number of students in that combined group for.
A higher number.
These are all students that were at the meets and exceeds levels, the two top performers.
Okay, so, all right. So for those kids, actually, they were fewer that did not meet the standard or near the standard. So they performed overall higher, so the top two blue.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're going to have a chance to see the performance of what are typically considered a high needs group. This first group of our students were considered economically disadvantaged. And while this is a small percentage of our entire school population, we do ensure that we know these students by name and that we know their needs. Specific actions have been identified in both our LCAB and in our district design 2022 to ensure that we're addressing the academic needs and also the well-being of every child. So this is the performance order of those who have status students on the meets and exceeds combined group as compared to state and county. These are our students that are in our special education program. We actually saw increases in this group from 2019. And these are the students who are English learners. There are fewer students for English Language Arts. That number on the left-hand side is a little bit smaller than the number on the right-hand side. And that's because students who are in US schools for less than 12 months are not required to get the English Language Arts assessment. So you see a difference in number there. It is important to remember that these students, by definition, are students that are not fluent in English, and they're taking a test that's in English. So, and despite that, comparatively, our students are doing very well in this group. So it's important for us to look at what happens once our students who were English learners become fluent in English. And these are our students who are, who have been reclassified as fluent in English speaking in these cases, as compared to county and state. As I shared, our 5th grade students had an opportunity to take the California Science Test or CAS last year, and this was the first time that the state actually assigned performance levels to the CAS. And this graph shows the percentage of students at the meets and exceeds level. So while we celebrate overall performance of our students, we also are working to support our community to demonstrate the active need. We start by making sure that we have sharing knowledgeable teachers in every classroom. We also know that state assessments are just one measure, and actually, that information isn't current. And so our teachers are using formative assessment practices and monitoring students throughout the instruction of the day and adjusting as they need to. And then in addition to that, we have a specific benchmark assessment, which allows us to see during the school year if students are progressing as we expect them to. Each of our schools is building a safety net system as part of the MTSS to make sure that every student is receiving specific targeted support when needed. We do have intervention features providing support in reading and in math. We have several digital tools available to provide supplemental intervention. And we also are able to support the whole child through social-emotional learning and also the supportive instructors. So going along the themes of being grateful. So going along the themes of being grateful, our school community can be proud of how our students were supported academically and emotionally throughout the pandemic. Our leadership team is initially grateful for our dedicated teachers and our support staff who have partnership with our families successfully supported our students during such challenging times. On a personal note, while I wouldn't have wanted to relive this experience at all ever again, I am grateful to have worked in this district during the pandemic. I'm grateful of the leadership of this school board, Dr. McClurg, of our cabinet, and also the determination of my colleagues to do whatever was necessary to ensure students would be able to learn in a safe environment. I think this is an opportunity where we can point to concrete evidence that's which supports saying a job well done. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to share. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I mean, I just have to say those are incredible results, and I'm sure we'll have some more comments on the results, but I want to take a moment also just to thank our district leadership and staff and all the community that has come together in our district to make these results possible. It was an incredible undertaking during COVID to stay at or better in some cases to where we were prior to COVID is really a testament to the dedication of Dr. McClurg and staff for making this happen. So I just want to take a moment to say thank you for that. Open up your questions.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you too, because I was impressed that the launch data here shows how robust our program that was. The students that were in that program really did well, so that we offered two real quality pieces of instruction in there. And I'm very impressed too with the graphs on all the socioeconomic, the special ed especially, and the English learners about how well they're performing compared to our peers. You know, we'd always like to get them even performing higher than we are now. Every student do meets and exceeds expectations. But the one question I do have, and this is all the students, so this is going through all the grade levels, if we isolate just the sixth graders, maybe also with Shelley too, or those special ed, those socioeconomic, those socioeconomic students, are we getting more of them to that point of meeting and exceeding expectations, especially the ones that we've had since kindergarten? It's harder to do it when you only have one or two years, but the ones that have had a full seven years in our program. Can you guys elaborate on maybe those numbers? You may have those in your head, so it might be hard to.
I don't have them in my head, but I will tell you that typically in our district, and it continues to be this way, when we look at third grade scores compared to moving out to sixth grade, moving forward to sixth grade scores, we see higher scores as they move through the grade levels, and I think that's continued overall to be the case.
Yeah, so I think when we get them to Sandy Edo, we've gotten a very good spot.
Absolutely. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Vivian, and thank you to the team. Okay. Next, we have 8.1, board approval to hold the 2022 organizational meeting of the governing board trustees on the December 14, 2022. A regular board meeting date, are there, is there a motion to approve the date? 8.2 organizational meeting?
Second.
Exactly. Okay. Opposed or in favor?
Aye.
That is the date, December 14, for the organizational meeting. 8.2 is board review for us to renew and propose 2023 governing board trustees meeting dates and locations, which are in the agenda. Are there any questions or comments about these? I just had a question that maybe you guys could address about sometimes it's the third, Wednesday, it's the second, and the fourth, like, do we have a target Wednesday, and we're going for it, and we have to make adjustments?
We do, it's usually the third or the fourth, but it also is driven by when the budget is due, so we have budget timelines. So in order so as to be able to do a regular board meeting, we then schedule board meetings around that.
Is that the reason why that's September?
Correct. That's correct. It's due 16, 15?
15.
Okay. So that is the first rate, sorry, I think you're supposed to do that. Do you have anything else to add?
That's okay.
All right, so then 8.3 is the board of course to report attendance report list of
Good evening again, as we do several times a year, and is also done by other staff members who come up to talk about different things in our priority actions for the year. I'm going to give an update on a few different parts of our district design 2022 priority actions for this school year. So today I'm going to focus on four areas, our educational programs. I'll pull out several things from our educational programs. I'll focus on student well-being, budget, and strategic planning. So first of all, educational programs, I'll call out several different parts from leaders two and three to talk about STEAM Plus. Will talked about it earlier, and we are fortunate that our DMSCF does fund a large portion of STEAM Plus. Our district also prioritizes STEAM Plus and funds about 60 to 70% of it annually, so it is a priority among our community as well as our district as a whole. And this year, we have a focus on developing STEAM Plus learning structures that promote student choice and differentiated opportunities based on grading. And this is articulated in our priority action for this school year, and our focus really is developing that structure that will allow for more choice and variation as kids are in the program from K through six. So we this year have a teacher advisory team made up of STEAM Plus teachers from our various schools, and have the wonderful opportunity to sit in on a couple of their meetings for a while, and again, to hear what they're talking about with STEAM Plus and how they're sharing the things that they've shared with me during those meetings have been great. They've been working with our instructional services team to create the schedules that reflect staff, students, and parent input, and to provide for consistent access to STEAM Plus discipline throughout the school year. Their progress has been remarkable, so they really publiced those disciplines in each grade level and what is consistent across the school year. In addition to that priority, we've also had a priority to communicate to our parents about STEAM Plus in ways that are beyond what we've done before. So our STEAM Plus specialists, in addition to the site, the site information that comes out, we're doing a link each month to talk about what's happening in STEAM Plus throughout the district. So the first month, we highlighted what's happening in those extraordinary environments, and I think the second one just came out. So this will help to create, to give a little window peek into what actually happens in STEAM Plus. So all of that has been part of the priority, and again, that advisory team of teachers is doing such a beautiful job, working with one another to really look at how do we offer those choices and options. One of the things that was talked about at the PTA president's meeting was the volume and quality of the clubs that's happening at all of our schools, and a lot of that is made possible through our STEAM Plus specialists and the coordination that the principals under the supervision and support of Shelley Peterson and her team in making that happen. So it's great to see those opportunities that are school sites that are vast and rich and really address their interests. Another areas and environments that I'll speak to tonight, so when we think about, when we look at our environments, our priority action this year is to transform key learning environments across the district to encourage student agency and independence. So when we look at that, we're looking at our learning spaces, our learning commons, how we really transform those spaces so that there are opportunities for children to engage and interact in ways that we haven't been able to before, both inside the school building as well as outside the school building. And as you know, we're very intentional about all of our learning spaces and environments to try to see that happen, and we have dozens and dozens and dozens of learning spaces now modernized throughout the district as part of this being prioritized. Another part of our educational program that I'll speak to tonight is our world language program. This program continues to thrive. As you know, there are several different components, and we are so proud of it. Shelley, kudos to you and your whole team for the great work you're doing. We've added second grade cohort to the immersion program at both of our schools, Ashley Falls and Delmar Hills. The staff that we've attracted, acquired, and retained is exceptional in that program. What they're doing is great. I've spent a lot of time personally in those classes, and to see the children engaging in Spanish is pretty remarkable. I've already, we've also added two primary language experienced teachers as part of our STEAM Plus program. There's nothing like walking into, I walked into not very long ago, one of our, one of those Spanish immersion teachers, or excuse me, primary language teachers engaged with her guitar, language was up on the monitor in Spanish, and the children were just completely singing, these are little five-year-olds, completely singing in Spanish as she was singing on the guitar, completely engaged, reading, visual. It was just perfect, so the fact that we have added that is great. And then, of course, our sixth grade program, which is throughout the district with clear objectives in that program with each phase of the learning, so it's been exciting to develop that program out, so we actually have articulated objective with each phase of the learning in our Spanish. We also have been looking at our kindergarten program specifically to the schedule. So we recently had some discussion at a board meeting and request to do a parent survey, so we did survey our parents about the schedule, and you can see here we had almost 1,000 total responses sent out to our parents. 57% of our parent survey prefer the kindergarten schedule to begin with a full-day schedule on the first day of school, that is the 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM schedule that our first through sixth graders have beginning the first day of school. And 43% of the parent surveys said that they are satisfied with their current kindergarten schedule, which is modified with an earlier dismissal time for the first six weeks of school. So our next steps in looking at that is to, we're going to be scheduling meetings with all kindergarten teams and site administrators for additional input and planning moving forward. Well, I expect that we will come back to the board with some information about what those meetings, what we learned from when we meet those kindergarten teams and site administrators. Another area that is a big focus area in our strategic plan is student well-being. You can see here we draw the priority action, the strategic implement, and tiered approach to support students' social, emotional, and mental health needs. Jenny Ha oversees all of this, does a beautiful job coordinating and collaborating with all of our schools and leadership and staff. And you can see here the different tiers. One of the things that's happened in that tier one is our student assemblies, our counselors, and thank you for spearheading hiring such quality people. We started this a couple of years ago, and I know our board has been very supportive and excited about this vision to add counselors into our program. The value added is wonderful. This year, the fact that they've been meeting and having interactions and interface with every child in our district K through six is wonderful. Through these assemblies, topics and contents have been based on age-appropriate needs, and those assemblies have been aligned with our second step curriculum. So some of this common messaging, understanding, and development of our children is really wonderful to see district-wide, and they're doing a beautiful job presenting at each of those assemblies. And then as we look into the winter and spring, we'll have more grade-level assemblies, and those topics will be identified based on data from student bonus surveys that we're doing. So it will be wonderful to see how the counselors work together with Jenny and of course the site folks to develop out those other assemblies, and I can come back and tell you more about those as we move through the year. They're doing a lot at each of our school sites. Our two, tier two interventions, I'll bring out one piece of that. We do have additional student support through small group individual counseling services available now, so that's wonderful to see for those students who need that level of support. And our tier three interventions have additional student support for more intensive needs that our students might have that would be provided by our mental health therapist who is a clinical psychologist. Another area I'll bring up, has talked about, been talked about a little bit in the wonderful shape or form earlier, is our physically couldn't budgeting. We are very focused and very clear about what our priorities are in this district and what our priorities are overall, both in the short term and long term. So as we anticipate long-term needs, we can budget for the short term and the long term. So because of that, we have a balanced budget. We continue to prioritize and be able to do the things that are in our district design 2022 because we have a clear focus and idea and input from all of our community. And our budgeting process involves teachers, support staff, site leadership, and of course, everybody here tonight in determining what their priorities are, so we can actually make things happen, like nearing the 50% of our district now, having some kind of modernization in those learning environments happen. So it's exciting to see all of that happen. We also maintain a strong reserve for economic uncertainties, and basically, a district is very important that we do that. And you can hear it seen here, some of the priorities that we have that we hold, sure we budget for, and we make sure happen. These continue to come up as I meet with focus groups of parents as well as teachers, small class sizes, our STEAM Plus program, the world language program, and having community schools, as we know that came out throughout the last several years and continues to be a focus and a priority. People really value their community school, a lot of our schools and a lot of our children, our neighborhood schools where children can actually walk or bike to school. And we're very pleased again to have the Moody's AAA rating. Good job, everybody on our cabinet for the hard work that you put in, being one of eight districts in the state of California to receive the highest rating is an accomplishment that says that our board and our district has the right priorities when it comes to budgeting and doing well for our children. And the last part that I'll talk about today is strategic planning. We are partnering, as you know, the board approved the last meeting, Patel for Kids in our Portrait of a Learner and our strategic planning for their services. And our timeline for that is November and December, we're in preparation in our initial engagement. We've had some meetings with them and with one another. I'm reporting here tonight some of that, and you know, meeting with PTAs and all of the focus groups is really contributing to that preparation and initial engagement. We also have in January, February, we're going to be having the Portrait of a Learner, and so what does that learner look like at the end of sixth grade, and then how does that learner develop throughout the years? And then March and April, the strategic planning process will return that portrait into an actual articulated, long-range plan. And then in May, May, June, we anticipate that that will be brought to the board for board approval of the actual strategic plan. So right now, we're in phase one, the prepare phase. We've had some district leadership orientation with Patel, and then we are in the process right now, we are developing communication tools, looking at how we communicate where we are, and the enthusiasm right now on our websites, we're having those conversations, and then looking at consultation and capacity building. So how do we involve people throughout the process, and that begins now? So we're excited about that and eager to see how the next few months unfold, and we've accomplished so much in the last several years. Vivian spoke to, you know, some of the academic pieces, it's wonderful to see that, and then I couple that with, you know, just how it's not, those are not just scores. We actually know we have meaningful, robust learning experiences throughout our district, that really we're looking at each and every little child, and excited about what we can do next, and we've got a lot more to do, so we're excited about that. And that concludes the areas I'm going to report on tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information if you'd like.
So in the strategic planning, so where in this process would be the climate survey?
I don't know. That part would go into, as we're looking at Portrait of a Learner probably, I mean, I'm looking, when you say where in the process, yes, I don't know exactly what the date would be, but it probably would go in that Portrait of a Learner, but there would probably be, we are always reaching out for some kind of engagement on the initial stages too, as we start out, to find out where we are right now with, with, you know, our perceptions, et cetera, so we've had some conversations about that already with Patel.
Exactly. I'd like to see it more of the earlier end of things, because that will influence what you're going to say in the Portrait of a Learner, where you are, what do our stakeholders say in a lot of these, in their answers, you know, where do we, where do we need to improve upon? And so I'd like to get that information, and I'd like to be able to digest that information as we go through the process. I like to know, you know, more on, you know, what, who's doing the survey and kind of what, I just don't know any of that yet, so I'd really like to get more details. I don't know if you can have anything by next meeting or?
I don't know. We've had some conversation, but I don't have any specific, we're just starting this process with Patel to get some definition around that. We did talk about it in our most recent meeting, and they have different approaches, models, and they will be very helpful in helping us with that.
Yeah, I'd just like to get a little more structure on that piece sooner than later. So I guess this is going to come up very quickly, you know, by the time we get on page.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, Chris Scott, just to second the idea, maybe tell people to come to the next meeting too, so that we can also ask them questions directly, and because there's a lot of different, because I don't know the answer to how to do the surveys appropriately, right? And Scott, I'm either a survey expert, so we're both, we want the same data, right? So we, what it sounds like, there were a lot of different layers of information, basic information, well, basic information to understand, to implement in the strategic planning process, but I would also like to see, you know, if we have goals that we articulate through the strategic planning process, then what is the evaluation of where we are with those goals as a? those goals as a starting point? So that way, as we go through the first year, through middle third, we can see progress against those goals in some sort of numerical way. So it's like you need to get enough information to come up with the goals, but then you also need to set the goals and see where you are with the goals now. So it's, it's, I don't know the answer to how it's structured, but I wonder if you can help me there.
I'm sure they can, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. I agree, I, that was one of my questions, where in this timeline is that survey going to take place? And is it Vitale who's writing it, creating it, administering it? Who's that, that's going to do that for us? And will we also be extending a survey out to our community, families, or to the larger community, even, you know, members?
We talked about that, too. That's, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we totally include that, too, yes.
In the schools. And along the lines of, I'll stick with surveys, I appreciate that the kindergarten survey was administered. I'm a little dismayed about the number of respondents. I would love to see us get at like a fifty percent respondent level. I think that would be amazing, and so if, you know, you could strategize ways to engage more participants, I think that would be great. Let's see, I'll go to, I'm going to go back to CASP. So I just kept looking at that fifteen percent, the not meeting or the other, that are not meeting standards. And I know we're doing still work compared to the county, compared to the state. I just, I want us to, it, it just was consistent, the fifteen percent. So if we could try to annually decrease that number, that would be amazing. Again, under, in the single digits. And let's see. I'm going to jump back to environments. It was one of the first topics that you mentioned. So I loved the idea that's being implemented currently at Pacific Sky where students can take a book. It's like the library is just outside their classroom door, and it's not like, oh, you go to the library on Tuesday or you go to the library on Friday, like, they just can check out a book. And I'd love to see some kind of data as to how often children are, are taking out books and if it's increasing. I mean, I would imagine it's increasing their reading. So I think that that's, it's a beautiful design and strategy, and I, I'm really impressed with that, and if it's increasing reading, then maybe we could look into incorporating it at the other sites.
That's okay. Yeah, that's one of our, as you know, our coach is to put a good idea in action. So with the decentralized library, that's exactly what we've done. Again, thank you to our instructional services team for working with the teachers to make that happen, because I, I can't reference any specific data right now, but I can tell you I'm there, and you were there, too. I think you can see kids literally constantly checking out books, so, you know, and it's no, very timely.
I mean, sometimes it's nice to have a book for a while to, yeah, it's just, that's a great concept.
And a lot more flexibility. We've had around, like, helping people book and what that looks like, and yeah, so very, very much.
There's a lot of learning taking place.
Yeah, very far removed from what historically would. Good for kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are at nine point one, board report facilities update. Here's Dawn.
President Nelson, members of the board, Dr. McClure, the supervising business services. And tonight, the facilities update will cover our three main projects within the district, Delmar Hills Academy modernization, Pacific Sky School, and Delmar High School rebuild. With the Delmar Hills Academy modernization, we are in much the same place we were when we presented to you a few weeks ago. We are finishing some of the structural work we need for DSA to go back for the structural analysis that helps them. Really what this is doing is it's looking at what are the as-built, and are they truly how it was built? Because it's such an old school, so if there's some verification of things that is being finished, and we have some work that's going to be done over Thanksgiving break as well, kind of looking up into that blue area and some of the blue MMs and things. We will be presenting to the Delmar Hills staff and to the board coming up as part of our next steps, looking then for approval of the project. And that allows us to finish the design development, and if, as you'll remember, we do schematic design, design development, and then that allows us, once you finish that, to get it in construction documents, and those are the documents that go to DSA. So DSA can then be approval of us. So still quite a bit to do with that design development and construction documents, which are some of the really detailed pieces, but we do hope that sooner than later, and maybe as soon as next month, we'll be able to come back with the, the plan to be able to share with the board and look at the approval of the basic plan before we go into that more detailed stretch. With Pacific Sky School, we are anticipating final sign-off in December, January area. So we are getting close to this probably coming off of this presentation because much of it is finished. We are finishing the very last items on the punch list in the kitchen. So that will be finished off. We have the little bits and pieces, there are little things that come up. We need some more bike racks here, or we're looking at how we can, you know, decrease a little bit of noise there, little bits and pieces, but those are all coming to the end, so exciting. This is a combination rendering that what we are putting together on the top are the renderings of the school. So as you can see up there, we have the big rendering on the right side, there are some of the design ideas that we had. And then on the bottom, you see the new school, almost the same angle with a picture of it. And then on the right side, you can see the very beginning, it's seven thousand square feet of really just a lot, and then showing it built. So we're going to take something like this and blow that up a little bit and have it up at the school pretty soon as something for people to see as they're coming in with it being the green, so excited to put some those finishing touches on as well. And then with Delmar High School rebuild, as you know, we have the injunction that has stopped the project, and that came with our second lawsuit that came against the project. Looking at litigation, the first lawsuit was filed, as you know, the Court of Appeal ruled in favor, stated the district can comply with CEQA. The opponents did very recently appeal to the California State Supreme Court on November fourth. The State Supreme Court has sixty days to make a determination as to whether they will hear it, and we have, we will be filing our opposition to that sometime early next week. And then back to the second lawsuit, there is a hearing on that lawsuit against the City of San Diego that was going to continue to December sixteenth, so that will be just after our next board meeting, and that will be the first opportunity to hopefully get the injunction lifted and be able to start moving forward with that project. So we'll continue to work on the litigation side to try to get through that, so we restart the project and get us moving forward so we can get that project completed. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a question? So I was wondering if there's any, if we're able to find out if there's any way that we could have students use the kitchen at Pacific Sky, maybe incorporate culinary arts into STEAM Plus.
So I, I don't have that yet, and what we're looking is to hopefully bring on a director fairly soon. I'm going to be leaning on that person to help us to look at how we might be able to utilize that. So as we get to the point where it's a punch list and finished and it's turned over to us, then yes, we will look into that as a potential opportunity.
All right.
Other questions?
I just had a request with regards to Delmar and Hills. I see you have on there a presentation of the project to the board and then approval of the project. I just want to make sure those are two different meetings so that the board has a chance to ask questions and follow up on any, any items, and even if it's not a totally done and dusted proposal, that's fine. I think just, it's fine if we see it before it's completely finished, but definitely before we have to approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. We are at closing items. Board review reminder of upcoming DMUSD events. Twelve point one in your agenda. Twelve point two is board review of upcoming DMUSD PTA events. Twelve point three is preliminary items for the summer regular board meeting. Are there any? Twelve point four is adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll leave it there.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, August in favor? Disposed? Meeting adjourned seven thirty eight PM.